Chief, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you please lead us in prayer?
Sure. Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day that you allowed us to walk in today. God, we ask that you will lead us in the right direction, that you will give us the wisdom and the insight to make the right choices. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Victor. Nita, you want to do roll call?
Counselor Foster?
Killing it in quarantine.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
A quorum is declared.
Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we do. We need to, um, H1, we will be continuing for thirty days. Um, we need to also add P1, executive session for legal advice. And then just to let you know, um, N3 and 4, Kids Connection Anika and Recreation Jaime will not be present this evening, so there will be no reports.
So Recreation, Kids Connection, no report. And H1 is continued for thirty days, you said?
Correct.
Jason, you want this?
I've got it.
I've got two, but I still... Okay. So we need to make a motion to approve the...
I would make a motion to approve the modifications to the consent agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the modifications to the agenda. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda.
Okay, approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting, minutes of special meeting, and review and approval of accounts payable.
I move that we approve, to approve the consent agenda. Minutes of regular meeting, minutes of special meeting, review and approval of accounts payable.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting, minutes of the special meeting, and the review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Proclamations, communications, and appointments. Swearing in of new Council Mayor, Jason Lorenz. That's what you were...
I can swear at it.
In.
Oh, okay. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jason Lorenz...
I, Jason Lorenz.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
The Constitution of the State of Colorado...
The Constitution of the State of Colorado...
And the Charter and Ordinance of the City of Montevista.
And the Charter and Ordinance of the City of Montevista.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Counselor.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Counselor.
Which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations. I'll get you the second. And then I will get you your...
Okay. Appointment to the opioid advisory board?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, um, I don't know if you've heard about this in news or whatever, but the State of Colorado, yeah, along with a lot of other states, entered into, um, an agreement with the opiate companies, um, the big drug companies. And so Colorado basically received four hundred million, um, as settlement for the opiate, uh, for the opiate, um, distribution from all these companies. So that money's being distributed across, I think, five or six regions across the state. So the San Luis Valley is its own region, so they're asking for people to serve on this board. So San Luis Valley's gonna be about two hundred thousand, I think, a year. You might actually write these, uh, right, G? It's two hundred thousand a year. So they've formed this council or committee to distribute this money and to make sure that we're properly using this money. So this council or this committee has come together and asked that, uh, Montevista have a representative on it, and that's for, as Rio Grande, for the municipals, so we're asking for somebody to sit on this. So they're gonna decide the, the use of this money. Uh, it's oversaw by Lori Lasky, she's the, uh, County Commissioner in Alamosa. So we really, I'm asking, want somebody from council to be on there. It can be law enforcement, or it can be city staff. I can't be on there. I was appointed by the AG as part of the, um, the state committee, so otherwise I would be happy to do it, but I've already been appointed to that, so it, I, I, I think it'd be best to have somebody from council to be on this, uh, committee. Again, it's to make sure that the money is properly distributed and used properly. So that's been, for volunteers, or voluntold from council to be a part of that. That was my suggestion as well.
I'll do it.
So if I could get a motion and a second to appoint Victor to the, uh, Opiate Settlement Committee for the San Luis Valley?
I move to appoint Victor to the Opiate Settlement Committee for the San Luis Valley.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Victor Segala to the opioid advisory board. Is there any more discussion?
So I will get you all the information. Now, I will give your name to Lori Lasky, and then she'll reach out to you. Uh, I'll just make sure, whatever email you want me to use and phone number, and then, uh, we'll pass that on, and she'll be in contact.
Perfect.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you. Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to appoint Victor Segala to the opioid advisory board.
Thank you, Victor. All right, keeping the lights on after school proclamation. Keeping the lights on after school of proclamation. Whereas the citizens of Montevista stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults, engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas the City of Montevista Kids Connection has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas, lights on after school, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. Whereas more than twenty-eight million children in the U.S. have parents who work outside the home, and seven point seven million children have no place to go after school. Whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights. Whereas the City of Montevista is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to complete, to compete in the global economy. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Dale Becker, Mayor, do hereby proclaim October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, as Lights On After School Day. And be it further resolved that the Mayor enthusiastically endorses Lights On After School and commits our community to engage in innovative after-school programs and activities to ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for cho- all children after school. So, Red. I like that. Very much so. We will move on to citizen comments. So scheduled appearances. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, you have to file the appropriate paperwork with the city clerk by noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So we have military send-off.
Good evening. Um, again, the reason we're here. First off, um, since the last time we were here, we changed the name of the group. Uh, it is now Proud Military Parents and Supporters. What we're trying to do is we're reach, trying to reach out to more than just parents to join the group. Um, it's all voluntary, but we're actually asking for anybody who wants to come out and help, um, feel part of, feel part of the group. And that was a lot of comments with, the last name was, "Well, I'm not a parent. I'd love to support it," or "I'd love to help, but I'm not, I'm not a parent." So first of all, we, we changed the name. Um, second of all, um, whoever doesn't know us, I'm Cory Avila, my wife Kelly, and Cindy Golden. We are members of, uh, Proud Military Parents and Supporters. We are doing another send-off ceremony October twenty-third at eleven a.m. at the Frank Heathley, at the Faith Hinckley Memorial Park. We're doing another send-off. Twenty-third, October twenty-third, eleven a.m., the Faith Hinckley Memorial Park. Um, for this, this kid, this gentleman is... Chris Arthur, joined the Marines, and they're from Montevista, but he went, he has ties, ties to Creed. So we're trying to expand beyond Montevista, and we're trying to reach out to the valley and kind of try to start doing this for kids or recruits throughout the valley. That's another reason we needed to expand the, the members of this group so that we can actually have the numbers to support doing this. Um, so we'd like to invite everybody out. Um, that's all the information about, uh, the send-off that, that I have, but yeah, it was a, we were doing this for a formal, um, invitation to the send-off and introduce one of our newest members, which is Cindy Golden.
Welcome, Cindy. What'd you say the young man's name is?
It's Chris Arthur.
Courtney Arthur is, she's in police, some, somehow in self-work, I think, or there's, yeah.
She's big since...
Yeah, yeah, it's there, it's her son.
And then we are also doing care packages for our, um, the local military. And, um, we are accepting donations if anybody would like to help us out with that. We do have a letter and then ideas for you guys, so. And then my name and number is on the bottom. If you guys would like to help us out, um, you can contact me and then I can come and pick it up. If we can have the donations by the twenty-eighth, I think. Cause we will start doing, um, we'll do the care packages on the November sixth. So.
You're gonna do the care packages on the November sixth?
I don't think so. I think it's on the other...
Are you gonna gather somewhere?
Yeah, um, yes, we will be gathering at, um, Jennifer and Eric, or Taylor.
I don't have a...
We can get you guys an address if you want.
Okay, that'd be great.
If anybody wants to come and help out, we can just help, put patches, yeah, we can get you guys.
Do we have boxes and things like that?
Um, well, we go to, I'll go to the post office and get the first-class boxes.
So you have to, you have to have those?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I have a lot of boxes to get rid of.
Yeah, so we'll get those boxes. This way they're all the same size and, yeah.
I think you said they did forty, they mailed up forty-two, um...
The, the...
Year before.
We didn't do it last year because of COVID.
Throughout the valley.
So we did send, like, Montevista Kids a fifty-dollar gift card, but we, with us not asking for donations last year, we didn't reach out to that, so. But we are doing it again this year, so if anybody would like to help us.
So, before, before you guys get off the podium, um, I would like to make a motion to, uh, donate a thousand dollars to, uh, what is it? The Proud Military Parents and Supporters.
Yes. Thank you, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much.
I second that.
Yes, thank you. We do need that.
Yes, we need to do that. So it's been moved and seconded out of the council funds that we donate a thousand dollars to the Military, Proud Military Parents and Supporters.
Yes, we appreciate that very much.
Any more discussion on this? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to donate one thousand dollars to the Proud Military Parents and Supporters.
You guys want to get with me on Monday?
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you guys very much.
Citizen comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this meeting. Be sure and sign your name up.
Yes, sir, certainly will.
Thank you.
We're not sure who you are.
My name is Bob Richards. Uh, thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes. And I wanted, I just want to say that I know that many of you in this meeting have been sort of following my quest to be able to put a beer fest on in the new Sky High. We originally slated it for mid-October. It had to be moved to October thirtieth. We ran into some further delays in the building. Um, I initially had, uh, Colorado Farm Brewery step up and agree to be sponsors for several thousand dollars. We had a number of breweries, uh, that were interested. We were, uh, probably gonna have about twenty breweries with a hundred beers there for sampling. Unfortunately, now, we're not gonna be ready on the thirtieth. So we were attempting to move it to November thirteenth, and unfortunately, that's not gonna work. I have, uh, I've had about twenty breweries drop out because there's other things going on that date. So, looks like this time around, we're gonna have to put it on ice, so to speak. And, uh, perhaps we can try to do something either in the spring or next fall. So I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on where that is and tell you that's where we are with it. But I really appreciate your help, especially Chief, who was really sort of gone above and beyond to try to make this happen. So, that's where that's at.
Thank you, Bob. Have any other? Margot? Not laying you off that easy.
You weren't here last time.
I know, I totally spaced it out. Hello, everybody. It's good to be here. It's good to see everybody. And I just wanna say, Bob, I love our radio station. It is just one of the pluses of our little community. I wake up to it, uh, Ryan is a hoot, and the information we get on there for our little valley, it's wonderful. Thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you very much.
And the, the little talks you have with people, it's informative. I, I, I learn stuff. And I just find that encouraging that we have something like that in our community.
Well, thank you very much. You can look forward to a talk with, uh, Nita coming up on our park in Sanchez Park.
Oh, good, good.
We recorded it today.
So I just wanna say thank you and, uh, still enjoy living here. Way to go, Monty. And, oh, I guess we're having new businesses. I keep seeing action happening on First Street, First Block of Adams. So I don't know what's going on, but it looks active and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Anybody else? Yeah, you said some comments? Anybody got any more comments? Yes, no?
Not for now.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move on then. So public hearings, uh, H1 has been continued for thirty days. So we have the special review use, SRU, for sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue, Montevista, Tristan Winters. So we turn this back over to you, Mike?
Okay, we'll, uh, call this, uh, public hearing, uh, in order, and, uh, we do have an applicant, Tristan Winters. He's requesting to open a repair shop. The building has been used as a garage in the past and apparently is equipped for the repair shop. The requested use for the property is a special review use within the commercial highway zoning district. So I believe that the, uh, staff has reviewed everything, letters have been sent out, notice has gone out in the paper. And so I think we're ready to proceed. The Planning Commission, I believe, has recommended approval. So, Nita, why don't we just start with you generally, and then we'll see if the applicant wants to say anything, and also see if anyone is, you know, is gonna object to it. So if you wanna maybe run up there, Nita, and just, uh, state your name, uh, for the record, and then give us kind of a heads up on what's going on there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so before you, there's a special review use for sixteen thirty-six Highway one sixty for a repair shop. On September ninth, the, ninth, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this special review use and did recommend approval based on three conditions being met. One, the condition that the building be cleaned up, the outside of the building be cleaned up, the weeds be cut down, and all the vacant cars be moved and licensed. So if there's any vacant car, or cars out there, that they be licensed. Um, and Mr. Winters has complied with all that. The third condition was that he must renew his business license on a yearly basis, and Mr. Winters has agreed to do that. He is currently leasing that building, and we do have a letter of approval from the owner for Mr. Winters to lease that building.
Thanks. Thank you, Nita. Uh, Mr. Winters, do you wanna get up and say what you're doing there, just for the council? If you'd state your name for the record, and then tell us, uh, what you're doing there and what your plans are.
And Tristan Winters is trying to open up the repair shop over there on thirty-six thirty, or sixteen thirty-six Grand. Pretty much just a basic repair shop, try to do what I can, get it cleaned up. For the time being, uh, I'm leasing it from Peel Glover. I have a friend who's trying to buy it at this time. If that happens, we'll try to go through and paint it, try to do some other things to clean it up. But for, at the time being, there's really not too much I can do with the, the physical appearance of the building, but I'll try to do what I can to keep it cleaned up.
Are you operating it yourself, or do you have employees, or what do you do?
No, I'm a owner-operator, no employees, at this time.
And you're okay with the conditions as recommended by the, uh, Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does any of the council members have any questions of Mr. Winters?
I don't believe I do, do it. Does anybody else?
All right, um, let me just ask in the audience if anybody, uh, you can have a seat, uh, Mr. Winters. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant or in favor of it? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Doesn't look like we have anybody in opposition. So at this point, Council, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, go to the council for their approval or disapproval.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the special review use, uh, sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue, wanted this to, uh, corroborate one-one, report to Tristan Winters.
It's been moved and seconded, approval of the special use, or special review use permit for Tristan Winters. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Nay.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the SRU with four yes and one no.
Keep busy then, young man.
I'll do my best. I appreciate you guys.
And Mr. Winters, I will send you a letter of approval.
Okay, thank you, Nita.
Resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, amending resolution twenty nineteen dash zero one of the city's compensation and wage bases for City of Montevista by adding the Event Center Manager, Economic Developer, to pay grade seventeen and moving and renaming the Human Resources Coordinator to Human Resources Risk Management Director, and adding it to pay grade seventeen.
Good evening, Mayor and Councils. Before you is a resolution twenty twenty-one seventeen. Resolution amending, resolution twenty nineteen dash oh one, the city's compensation philosophy and wage basis for the City of Montevista employees. Whereas, Section Three, Classification Pay Plan for the City of Montevista Employees Handbook, adopted by resolution two dash two eighteen on February first, twenty eighteen, provides a revision to the classification of compensation of city employees by resolution of the City Council. Whereas contracted, the employees' council, employers' council has conducted a wage analysis study and created a plan based on those findings and placing existing employees in proposed plan. The, whereas, the following positions were not part of the original wage plan. And whereas, the Event Center Manager, Economic Developer will need to be added to pay grade seventeen of this plan. And whereas, the Human Resource Coordinator should be moved from pay grade fifteen and moved to pay grade seventeen and renamed Human Resource slash Risk Management Director. And now therefore, let it be resolved that this has been read into record in full this date, October seventh, twenty twenty-one, and open for discussion.
Has a study been done on what the pay grade should, should be for those positions?
Uh, no, those were not included in that study.
So they weren't in, included in the original study because we didn't have those positions. So Bob did do some research and reached out, and, um, we need to do, going forward, we need to redo the whole page. we need to redo the whole pay plan again. But this was the best place, that looked like the closest place to put them. So that's, it's not a complete study, being full disclosure on it, it's not a complete study, but he did reach out. I think he talked to Employers' Council and then just the other research he's done on, you know, averages and stuff like that, so that's why they're.
Some, some research.
Yeah, oh yeah. It wasn't just like, I'll just put them here. There was some research done on that, locked into research on.
I've already asked you this and clarify, but I just wanna clarify, I don't mean, the Event Center Manager and the Economic Developer are two separate entities, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Two separate people?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Two different positions.
Okay.
Yeah, two different entities.
Do you vote on that, Anita?
Yes, sir. Do you need a motion to approve?
I'm sorry.
You need a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to approve resolution twenty twenty-one seventeen, amending resolution twenty nineteen zero one of the city's compensation and wage basis for the City of Montavista by adding the Event Center Manager, Economic Developer to pay grade seventeen and moving and renaming the Human Resources Coordinator to Human Resources Risk Management Director and adding it to pay grade seventeen.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution two zero two one dash seventeen, amending resolution two zero one nine dash zero one. Is there any more discussion?
What is pay grade seventeen?
As far as?
What is the salary at pay grade seventeen?
Uh, I don't.
What's the?
Starting at fifty-five, going to seventy-eight.
And when will, would this become effective? Immediately?
Thirty days after the signing of the resolution.
Any more? Anita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen.
Well, it looks like we're moving right along, so staff proposals, reports, and actions. Interim Chief City Manager? That means you have three minutes to talk.
Okay, good evening again. I have pretty short report, um, pretty much just the last three weeks since we went, just doing, working on budget. Um, we had, we have our first budget meeting with you all on Monday. Um, so we've spent a lot of time on that and getting a lot of input and feedback from the directors and everybody. So a lot of work was went on that. It's, it's definitely very challenging, first time either Anita or I have ever done this. So we've had a lot of good people to reach out to and ask a lot of questions. So we put a lot of thought and work into it. And Rob has been a great help. Rob's been here, he's part of the furniture, so he's been able to help us. So, um, so we did hire an Event Center Manager who will start October twenty-seventh, the local girl. Um, uh, working out, getting the logistics and everything set up with that. We're still working, tweaking, working on, um, the contract and the pricing and everything for the, for Sky High, what that's gonna look like. Uh, we've went back and forth numerous times. We have another meeting on Monday. Um, and with our soon-to-be new city manager has some experience in this, so that's going to be very helpful, um, and experience in that. So, uh, along with Carla's been, Carla's been a great part of this too. So, uh, just when we think we're there, something else comes up. Um, you know, just like we've said, we've been trying to build the airplane as we're trying to fly it. So, um, put a lot of work into that. We, we did hire a new HR director who's going to start here in a few weeks too. And so Bob's, as you guys know, Bob is transitioning out. Uh, but he has agreed to stay on board to help get her trained. Um, I've talked about this several times, about succession planning. Um, I don't feel that we've, in the past, have necessarily done a really good job with succession planning. We just kind of, somebody leaves and you bring somebody in new and try and teach them. I don't think that's necessarily a good way to operate any business, whether it's government or anything. If you have the opportunity to keep the outgoing, you know, as long as it's somebody that's like, like Bob, who's retiring and has a lot of experience, is willing to stay. And I think we should try and keep them around to help with that transition. So that's what we're gonna do with the HR, 'cause that, that's another very important position, HR, making sure that we're following the rules and we're doing everything right. So Bob's agreed to stay on at least part-time and come in and give advice, kinda like what we did with Anita and brought in Debbie Phillips to help get her trained to make sure that we're doing things right. Um, we, the only other position I think that we have, still have open in the city, uh, which is kind of amazing, is we do have a rec position when Kim left. Uh, that's the only position that we, that we still have open. And hence is why Jaime's not here tonight, because he had to go run a basketball camp or something like that. So he's Lone Ranger over there. Uh, oh, that's, that's not true. We do have one other, it's gonna be the Assistant for the Event Center Manager, but I think we need to wait until we get the Event Center Manager in, get that person kind of up to speed and let them also be, as well as the new city manager, and let them be involved in that process of hiring, hiring the other person. I think that's the better way to do that. Uh, we had a great meeting today with the Rio Grande County Commissioners. Uh, we invited them to lunch and then we took them on a tour of, of Sky High, even though it's not complete, but we just thought that was a good opportunity to, I mean, 'cause they're gonna be an integral part of making sure that this is a success. So me and Rob met with them, along with Carla and then Commissioners, and then the mayor was there as well. And it was a really, it was a really good meeting. In fact, I think we kind of discussed this about maybe reaching out to some of the other entities like Elmoza County and inviting their Commissioners over again. Because as we've said a hundred times, this is a regional event center. This isn't just the Rio Grande or Montavista, and we need to get everybody on board. So I think this is a good way to start doing that, is bringing in. Uh, next up is either Elmoza County Commissioners or the City Council and stuff from Elmoza. Bring in them and then doing the same thing, taking on a tour, having a discussion with them and, and just making sure that we're all aligned so that this is successful. So, uh, we talked about that. Uh, so I'm gonna be reaching out to either Elmoza County or Elmoza City within the next few weeks and try to set the same thing up and doing it again. Um, on the PD side, uh, I wish I could tell you what's going on there. Just kidding. A, a little bit, but not as much as I'd like to be. Uh, not much change, other than we're still very busy. Um, uh, we're still working through COVID. Just when we think we've got past all that, somebody else, like a family member, so we've had to, we just had another member go out. He's actually had his shots and does not have COVID, but his family members have COVID. So he's been out this week. So, and, and as you, you've heard me say many times, when even losing one person, that just, uh, just kills our schedule. So he's been out, so we've been moving people around on that again. Um, the other thing that we have, this kind of a challenge that just came about this afternoon, is, uh, the Rio Grande County Jail is under COVID restriction with inmates. So I literally just, ten minutes before I walked in here, worked out a deal with, with Sheriff Jackson in Elmoza County, so we do have arrests that we can at least still, still do our job without just, you know, having to turn people loose that don't necessarily need to be turned loose. So Sheriff Jackson, of course, was graciously to help us out with that. Other than that, that's all I've got, and forty-five days. Forty-five days left. What else you guys?
You've become the assistant assistant city manager.
I'll do whatever the city manager tells me.
You've done a wonderful job. I thank you very much. I thank you very, very much.
I don't feel like I have. I feel like I've just, like, won it, but I actually work better under pressure like that. Just wing it.
Yeah, you're doing a great job.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you're in the hot seat now.
Okay, good, good. Okay, Mayor, Council, Gigi, good to see you. She's almost on board, gonna be here hopefully on about my birthday, so it'll be a good one. Anyway, I'm excited. Few things, I've got some things we've done in the last couple of months. Uh, the city court is getting busier and busier. I think we're getting close to pre-COVID numbers. People are paying, people are, uh, we're moving cases through. We continue to run a lot of young people through the circle program and the lead program and try and get them where, you know, if it's a first offense and they're young, we don't wanna ruin them, we don't wanna mess up their record. We try and run them through programs that will allow them to, to get some community service done, do some things, and then hopefully their record is clear. But things are moving pretty good. We're pretty busy in the courts. A month or two ago, the chief and I were in city county court. Uh, defense lawyers always trying to get police records for their defense whenever there's a case and there's an officer involved. And so this is the second one for us and we filed a motion to quash the subpoenas. And so that was successful and so, so far, we're two and O, so doing good. Just a lot of issues coming up. I mean, issues are, I mean, one came up today and I think that's kind of why we continued this, so we could look at it. And certainly I appreciate, um, members of the public that if they have a question and they don't wanna talk to somebody, I don't have an issue talking, trying to find out what the issue is. And if there's a problem, we'll try and resolve it and hopefully we can look at everything and make sure what we're doing is okay. Last couple, about three weeks ago, we had a house that was being used for drug activity with our code enforcement officer and the help of the county inspector, building inspector. We got that place closed down, so that was good. And there's a lot of issues with the house. We kind of went around it a little bit different. And, uh, instead of hitting the issue directly, we kind of went end-run and kind of shut it down based on the problems with the building and all the needs and deficiencies. So got that kind of lined up. We've had issues, I mean, and I appreciate the chief, he's got an issue, he calls me and we try and get it done. We had kind of an issue with the budget and should we have notice and this and that. So we handled that pretty quickly. I had an issue with a legal description on some property with Anita this week. Went up to the county, did some research, got that kind of squared away. And just stuff seems to happen all the time. We've got a lot of moving parts here. But certainly I appreciate Anita, the chief, coming and saying, hey, I've got an issue, what do we do about it? And we try and get it resolved and hopefully work in the, in that direction. Uh, we're publishing in the paper. We've got a quiet title action going on a piece of property that, there's a deed restriction on it that just keeps it only for public use, recreation, I believe, use. And so we're trying to quiet title to this piece of property. It's over on the west end of, uh, of the Sky High facility, kind of west there. And so hopefully, once the publication is clear, we'll be able to clear that deed restriction and maybe get the property put on the market and have something useful go in there. So that's something we're working on and I'm hoping we're getting close to our publication time. Issue came up, uh, uh, just recently here on the One Cent Committee. They had some questions, uh, about whether expenditures include salaries and, and so my opinion was that, that, that salaries could be included in those expenditures. Um, but I did go to CML and talk to some people there that are a lot smarter than I am and they gave us an opinion on that issue and said that they thought salaries were included. The other issue, though, was a little bit more complicated. Um, apparently our, our ballot issue, um, initially had only, we had only anticipated raising four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Well, we, we raised actually an, an extra fifty-three thousand the first year. Now, the second, and after, the second years and thereafter, any increases can be spent by the committee. But the question became whether we could spend this extra forty-three thousand because we hadn't really anticipated getting that much money. And so CML helped us with an opinion and, uh, it looks like we're gonna have to probably go back to the voters and get their approval to spend that money. And I think that was the concern the One Cent folks had, so, so there's some good people in that One Cent deal. They're paying attention, so, so that's good. But it looks like we may have to do something to do, to go back to the voters and so that may be something we'll have to decide when to do that because you can either have a special election, which costs you a lot of money, or you can do it during a regular election and maybe you spend a lot less money. So that'll be something we'll have to address at some point. Other than that, it's just business as usual. We're trying to get a lot of things done. There's always issues and always things going on. We try and address and get as many issues resolved before they get to you, if we can. And sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. But overall, that's our goal, is to try and resolve issues before they get to be major events and you guys have to deal with it. Other than that, I really don't have anything else at this point. Um, anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. And thank you for taking care of public. Thanks, Mike. Okay, I'll go to council committees, city, city commission and council reports. Let's start with Anita.
I have nothing, just thanks for being here.
Appreciate that. Appreciate you being here. You make us look bad with a tie. Victor?
Um, I really don't have anything. I wanna congratulate Jason and appreciate him stepping up to the plate. Thank you.
Larry, do you have anything?
No, I'm getting really bored though, so, you know, someone needs to call.
Okay.
I do have a little bit of disappointing news, but I'm gonna follow it up with some positive. Um, as you know, the optimistics with the city, because they, they applied for the Main Street Up and For Business Grant, a hundred thousand dollars. It had to be submitted through the city, but the optimistics did all the work, all the data gathering and things like that, all the signatures, going to all the businesses, doing all the measurements. It was months of a lot of footwork. Unfortunately, DOLA turned us down. It, they had, um, forty-eight applications requesting more than twenty-one million. They only had, I think, nine point two million, five point two, five point two. So obviously that's four times as much as they had to give out. The good news is, um, the two co-founders, Ken Hamco and Adam Locke, have been on the phone since then with this, about this grant, finding out what went wrong while we were approved. They've learned some from that and are already working with DCI and some other, um, granters, funders, organizations that, that help small, small towns and small businesses and, and so they're already, they let them get this, they let, they let this get them down for a couple hours and then they were back up and riding again. So I'm glad to, I'm glad to see that happening. I'm not sure where they're going next, but that's the positive part, is that it didn't get them down. But that's the positive part, is that it didn't get them down. We're not gonna have negativity. We're not gonna have, they, they don't want that. We're going to support our local businesses, try to get some of these empty buildings filled, try to get some of these awnings redone still, try to get the windows fixed. We're gonna continue on that. One grant's not gonna knock them down.
Very good.
So disappointing, but, you know, they'll just keep going, and I'm sure they'd be glad for any help they can get. I don't need to be looking at anyone in particular.
Well, um, I'll go ahead and, don't forget, uh, proud military parents and supporters. For those of you that will be listening to this, they're collecting donations up till October thirtieth to send to, uh, military youth out of the valley. And they got a, quite a list. I'll give it to, Nita, did you have, did they give you the list?
Are you talking to me, Dale? I'm sorry. Um, no, but she said she emailed me, let me.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that got posted real well.
Thank you.
So don't forget that. The big one is, uh, the Sanchez Park Playground. Kaboom is, uh, October.
October eighteenth through the twentieth is construction, so still need volunteers for that. We took out all the old playground equipment this week, so.
That's really exciting.
Yeah, I passed by there and I was like, ooh.
Little hole sitting there.
Yeah, this is really awesome. So anybody who wants to volunteer to help, that'd be great. Bob, be there with the radio station.
Well, we talked about that today, actually, yes.
All right, awesome. That's a huge thing for this community.
Optimistic's gonna be the group, the one that ships out. Remember, if one I just go wrong, it's to go wrong totally. But I know that we're signed up for something.
Um, the other thing is, and, um, I seen, my wife pointed out to me that, uh, just recently, the animal shelter got broke into again. I, I seen something. I, I'm assuming it was here, but I, I'm not real positive. It looked like their little building, but they got them on video. Or a snapshot of them, but really people. That's, so they're probably, they may need a little extra help, so if anybody out there wants to help out with the animal shelter, that'd be.
They, but they're actually not taking any animals right now because they're, they're at full capacity, and they don't have enough staff.
Is that Connor and Alamosa both?
No, that's here.
It's Connor.
So pay attention to your surroundings, as always, especially for you ladies. Them hoodlums are still out there. Thanks to the chief and his department, Monty's looking better, but please pay attention to your surrounding, watch what's going on. Uh, prime example, I was in my backyard on Tuesday, and there was a gentleman come walking down my alley that I'd never seen before. And I have a rather large dog, and he, uh, doesn't really pay attention to anybody, and, uh, I've never seen him get that aggressive. So I'm assuming that he was tormenting or has been through there tormenting my dog because he's not that way, so just pay attention to what's going on in your neighborhoods very seriously. And outside of that, I have nothing else, so we can adjourn this meeting to go into executive session.